Are you ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Call to order. Salute to the flag.
My call to order is to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Tegeloff?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Oren?
Here.
Councilor Catherine?
Councilor Donovan?
Here.
Councilor Fawnett?
Here.
Councilor Pucci?
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Before we go into the minutes, I'm just gonna move up the community events and presentations. We have a proclamation this evening for Hunter, Mason, and Michelle Provincure. And they have been busy doing volunteer work. And they were awarded in Branford by Cosgrove Animal Shelter. And being that they are part of our town as well, I thought the council could recognize them as well. And we have a proclamation for Hunter, Mason, and Michelle Provincure Day in the town of North Branford, Connecticut. Whereas April 12th through April 18th, 2015 was proclaimed as National Volunteer Week by the President of the United States. It is a time to recognize these individuals who give back to their communities. And whereas we all benefit as a society, when ordinary citizens step up to make an extraordinary impact on the lives of others, volunteers make the world a better place. And whereas volunteers like Hunter, Mason, and Michelle make enormous commitments and sacrifices with little or nor recognition, they embody the spirit of service we can all be proud of, offering resources and hope where the need is the greatest, and in doing so strengthen our national character. Now therefore be it resolved that May 19th, 2015 shall hereby be known as Hunter, Mason, and Michelle Provincure Day in the town of North Branford, Connecticut. On behalf of the town council and by the powers granted to me by the town charter, I hereby congratulate Hunter, Mason, and Michelle on their recognition as Volunteers of the Year for the Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter. And thank you so much for contributing as much as you do.
Hunter Mason.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Bill has one. Jeff has one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
I know you always have someplace else that you need to be so you don't have to feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting. Because I know you have another commitment.
Thank you.
Yeah, it gets pretty boring.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous town council meeting, May 15th, 2015?
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Tegeloff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Oren?
Yes.
Councilor Donovan?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnett?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Yes.
All right, regular town council meeting. Item three, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent project met last Monday in regards to the Stanley T conversion. There's a few items on their wish list for the money that's left over from the STEEP grant that was approved. There's a few items that was on the, that are on the wish list but cannot be approved because the STEEP funds do not allow for the purchase. Two of the things were security cameras and television. So Park and Rec Commission is going to decide what they're gonna do, how they're gonna fund that or to move forward with that. And they also talked about the TBS roof project and the Permanent Project Building Committee voted on the recommendations to go with all of the ad alternates on the bid and to recommend Titan roofing as the contractor pending approval of the contract by the town attorney. And I see the architect is here tonight, so I don't know if you want to hear from him now or later in the agenda. There are two items regarding TBS. One is approving the contract and the other is the roof ventilators. So, um, do you want to hear from, do you want to hear from him now as long as he's here? Tom, do you wanna? Um, I think you do so that it picks up on, for the TV. There's a stand over there if you want to put on something.
I'm all right. Pretty good. Tom Hibbert, Hibbert and Rose Architects, just to follow up, Titan Roofing took the bids, was the low bidder. We have, our office has worked with Titan Roofing before on commercial projects. Our experience has always been very good with Titan Roofing since we hadn't worked with them on a government or school project, immediately got a list of references and was able to contact three architects very quickly. And first of all, I got very positive references with regard to schoolwork. Next thing we did is we did a scope review with them yesterday with Edgardo Vasquez, who's operations manager and the gentleman Jim, I forgot his last name, but he will be the project manager for the, for the project, for this project. And no problems, we had, they had a good understanding of the scope of work and were ready to move forward, we're anxious to go forward. Got a draft contract down to your attorney, and I spoke with him this afternoon. He had a few minor questions, I think those have all been clarified and he's satisfied, satisfied. And I expect that I'll begin to go ahead to produce the final version of the contract. Just to give you a visual, there were three ad alternates at the school. The base bid was just to replace the flat roof as they are. And then I believe there were two ad alternates to different sections. We had the, I believe it was the gym and the library were ad alternate one to put a standing seam metal roof on them. Ad alternate two, and that was also, it was the standing seam over the gymnasium and the library and the HVAC unit with the library. Ad alternate two was the standing seam roof over the front wing, which is where the administrative offices and the classrooms are. That's the wing that you first see when you drive up to the building. And that also included a new HVAC unit. Ad alternate three was just to replace the HVAC unit over the cafeteria. The HVAC units, the ones in the library and the front office or the front wing are about 18 years old. The HVAC unit over the cafeteria has given you the most problems. I believe that one is 26 years old. So the bids came in and it was recommended to accept all three alternates. So, these are both the same, it's just gives you a pictorial of what the building will look like. This being the front entrance, so you'll have the standing seam roofs. And that's just two different versions of, of the colors.
What color are we going with?
Purple.
And white? Striped.
It's in the blue range, isn't it?
I don't know.
I forgot, honestly.
I don't know. The building committee, I don't think picked a color from what I can tell.
Actually, I don't, you're right, I don't think they picked a color yet.
Right.
I'm thinking of another school. Don't think they picked a color yet.
But the, according to, are they gonna have the, the standing seam roof finished by the time school opens or just the trusses up and then the panels get put on later?
There's a very real possibility with just being this late in the year that we may not have all the standing seam roof installed. What we had to do anyway is when we take off that roof, underneath the standing seam roof, we have to, it's now an attic space under the code. So we had to put down R-30 insulation and we put down an EPDM roof, temporary roof over that installed roof. Because it, you just can't remove a section fast enough, put up the structural frame and the panels all in one day. So they'll probably come in, remove this entire section, put on the R-30 insulation, which is about five inches of insulation, put down that EPDM roof, and then come back and do the structure and the standing seam afterwards. So it will always be weather tight, but I think we're, you know, we're a little bit late in the year to get started. I think it will be difficult to get the stand, I don't think the standing seam will be done, completed by the start of school. But the other roofs will be, you know, the other, the flat roofs and the temporary roof underneath the standing seam will be complete, so you will have, always have a weather tight building.
And what effect does the standing seam have on the unit ventilators that are currently on the building?
The unit ventilator will be operational because the unit ventilators are on the flat roof.
There's nothing on where the pitch roof is going?
They are not. It would be, they, you know, they're pretty heavy. They have some weight to them. And we would have to build a whole separate structure to raise them up. And that would be a rather costly and expensive structure. So the unit ventilator for the library is off, just behind the library. And you see we've left this open flat space on the back side of the front gabled roof. And in there is where we will have our, where the unit ventilator is now. And we're gonna put it down in the same location. And this also gives us an opportunity to run the ductwork in through a vertical face wall. And we'll also have a door in that wall, so you'll have easy access to the, to the attic space.
What type of material did we go with, steel or aluminum?
Steel, for the standing seam.
So why did we, why did we choose steel? I mean, right now the cost is, is like eight cents a lineal foot more for aluminum.
Yeah, but it was, for, for the finished product, the standing seam roof, it's, it's quite a bit more actually. It's a substantial increase. And we've been doing standing seam roofs with the new paint systems, they, they've performed very well. We haven't had corrosion problems.
What's the warranty on the standing seam?
Thirty years.
It's really the paint on, on all of them, and the paint's the same. The aluminum's, the aluminum's cheaper to put up because it's much easier to use. The aluminum doesn't rust, it's scratched, which it will be scratched when it goes up, so then you get, you get rust, you know, immediately. First time it rains after it's scratched, it'll rust. So, I don't know how many lineal feet it is, but I did quote a big house with it just yesterday and was surprised it was only eight cents a lineal foot. Is this 16 inch standing seam or is it 24 inch or?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't think, it's not 24. It's probably 16, 18.
So there are a lot of lineal feet, but at eight cents a foot, that isn't, that isn't a lot of money. And, you know, on the residential side, which normally requires a little, a little better installation, a little better finished product, because you get people that care about it looking at it, the labor is less on it. So we didn't, we never put an option out in the bid to go with aluminum?
No.
Okay.
Is it too late to find out the difference in price?
No, you could, you could price that, absolutely. And that could be negotiated, I think, I think there are ways to do that.
I'm telling you, most of the guys, the labor ought to drop. It's not gonna now, but the aluminum labor, you know, because standing seams are labor intensive. And so anything that has to be handbraked, done by hand, the aluminum is fairly easy.
Well, this is all fabricated in the factory. There's very little done in the field.
But your connections and stuff when you put it together, there's still gonna be some work done.
Yeah, this is a symmetrical panel. So they just drop the panels and cut them and put the cap piece on. So there's actually very little, you know, as I said, the panels and the cap are fabricated in, in the factory. The final cutting length is done here. And all they really bend on most of these seams is just the cap piece.
Right.
And they have a seaming machine. So there's very little bending of material for the actual panels themselves on site.
Yeah, but aluminum doesn't rust.
Yeah, we have a lot of these roofs out there and we're not having any problems with them with rusting.
Is it galvanized metal?
It's just a very high quality steel in the paint systems and we, it'll take you out and look at some of the roofs that are out there for a number of years and we're just not having any rust problems with them.
How often do you have to recoat the roof or repaint the roof?
You really shouldn't, you shouldn't have to. I mean, what happens?
So the coating will last 38 years?
Well, what I recommend with, with standing seam metal roofs is don't get white because you're gonna be disappointed, it's gonna be very, it's gonna show all the dirt. I also recommend you don't get a very bright color because they will fade and they tend to chalk up. You want to get something a little bit in the mid-range for color, it won't show the dirt. And there is a standard in the specification that says, look, it's gonna degrade, it's gonna lose some of its luster and its color intensity over time. And they actually call, they've actually rated colors and give them a luminance. And the brighter colors have a, have a higher luminosity and they're actually allowed to fade more under the warranty. That's actually part of the warranty specification, that you are gonna lose some of the color. It's going to fade over time. But what we noticed over time is the colors in the mid-range or earth tones and things like that just don't have that bright luminosity to begin with and they, they don't tend to lose a lot of the color and chalk up. The other thing too is, it's big roofs do it too, but you can actually come in and just every once in a while, give them, give them a quick wash, quick power wash and give them a light and that'll help bring back the luster. But...
And you don't want to go with a red one because they fade to pink?
Yeah.
Well, the frame has green.
Right, green is, green is really your best bet.
Right. You're right, and you've had that experience, they say stay away from the rich colors, the deep blues, the reds, anything with real intense color because it is allowed to fade a little more. And you go into your mid-grade, your earth tones, your greens, your colors that are in there, your slate colors, grays do very well. They may, they retain their color.
At the edge of the roof, what sort of a system are they running? Are they running, so is the panel gonna come down and wrap around the drip edge or how is the end sealed?
Well, the gutter is designed so that it actually extends up underneath the panels away and...
Right, so the gutter slides up underneath the panel?
Right, it's a, what I call a full flange gutter. It has a flange on it.
Okay, so then the panel's gonna lay on top of that and that's, that, that does not fold in or go into a slot on it? It's just a flat seam sitting there?
Well, it's a flat seam and it's sealed.
With like a caulk or something, that's the way you're doing it?
Usually we use a little like a butyl tape. And the butyl tape stands up as long as it's not...
And what's up at the ridge?
Again, we have a cap system.
Yep.
That's manufactured, that hooks on...
The top of the panel go into a molding and the cap fits on that?
Yeah, it's, it's a fitted piece that, that hooks on and you rivet it on. And of course it has to be, there's a, a mesh in there, like a copervent type material that allows it, it is a self venting panel. So there always is some ability at the, get some air in, move it up and vent it out the top to keep the roof cool. It's also good because you don't get any moisture buildup. Keeps things moving.
So what's the estimated completion time to have all the panels on, if it's not gonna, if the panels aren't gonna be on by the time school starts, what are you?
I wouldn't expect it to lag, you know, a few more weeks.
And is that work gonna be done during the school day while kids are there or nights and weekends or how's that gonna be done? Or how is that in the contract? How is that?
We can make them go second shift. I mean, they really can't work. We can tell them they can't work if the kids are in school. So they would go to second shift or, and work on weekends. And we've, we've had them do it while the kids are in school and it really hasn't been a problem because it is, it is actually that process of putting the panels down, it's just a clip.
Yeah, that's the quick part.
And it drops in and they just seam it.
They should be down, everything but just the panels and that's...
All it is, is a couple screws at the top because the panel has to move. And it fits in between the two clips, just drops into a slot. They put the cap on and they just run the seaming machine down it and it's actually a very quiet process.
But to run second shift or weekends, does that add cost to the project? I mean, the project is...
The second shift really hasn't, they'd probably go second shift because they really don't get a, there's no cost increase for them to shift the day.
Has, has the Board of Ed discussed any of this with you? I mean, because it's really not up to us, I mean, it's, they're the ones that are occupying the building. But is there anything in the contract right now in regards to that? Is there any concern on the board's part or not?
No.
Oh.
There hasn't been. And we have protections in there. I mean, if there's kids in the school and it's an issue at all, that's in there, they can shut them down. I mean, with kids in the school, priority number one is safety. That's it. The kids, it's safety of the kids and the performance, you know, if they can't effectively run their programs and teach, yeah, they have the authority to, to shut it down, absolutely.
And what's the warranty on the flat roof sections?
I believe that's also 30 years.
So the whole roof is 30 years?
I believe so, yeah. We're cycling everything at the same time. It doesn't make sense to, all of a sudden at year 25, geez, we need a new flat roof, what are we gonna do with that standing seam roof? It doesn't.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, Economic Development Commission.
They did not meet, but there is strong interest in the project for D-99, Fox and Road. They're confident they'll see at least two responses. Closing is 29th, there's another item later on in the agenda and hoping for three volunteers in terms of subcommittee to form that to review proposals.
Item C, Park and Recreation.
Park and Recreation met last night. As many of us probably have heard, but Pam announced to the commission that is leaving North Branford and is moving on to another town. She's moving on to Darien. She took a position there, so last night was her last Park and Rec Commission. There are a lot of things ongoing right now. The biggest thing is the getting some type of a playscape in place at the community center, the STW Community Center. She does have quotes which are on state contract, so they don't have to go out to bid. And they are looking to put in a playscape structure so that it would be installed probably mid-July or so is what they're looking at, so that their summer camp program can utilize that. All of summer camp this year will be up at Stanley T. It used to be split between Jerome Harrison and Stanley T, but because of the roof project at TBS, Board of Ed's summer camp program had to be moved to Jerome Harrison, so there's no room, all of her camp and the senior programming will all take place out of STW. So they have some challenges there this summer to have all those people occupy the space. So that's what they're dealing with on that. And they're also working on, and it's in our packet, as far as the redoing of the tennis courts, basketball courts at Memorial Field, which was part of our bonding project. So, and I know Mike will have an update for us as far as personnel at the Park and Rec Department in executive session to go over with us. But that's basically what the commission talked about last night.
Item D, Police Commission.
The police commission met on May 11th. Congratulations to this department for receiving the JAG grant, which is $18,000. $11,972 of that goes towards a regional crime scene traffic reconstruction vehicle or part of a regional route. The remaining money will be used to purchase third quarter batteries, the radio, for the radio that I'm creating need for that. And also need tactical light patrol rifle upgrades. We also have some interesting presentations about some of the training programs going on in this department, going towards reality based training. It's quite interesting, Sergeant Lowry gave a very interesting presentation about that. So they're really working well with other group, with other towns and...
Item E, Fire Commission. Last night I attended the officer installation dinner for Company Three. Right now the fire commission, they're planning their training facility and there's still discussions on dispatch and also C matches in the forefront, which will be updated. And I think talking about the communications committee is another item that we'll be discussing that's pretty important. That'll be further on our agenda. Item F, Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
Town Planning Committee met last week on May 12th. We met with department heads, public works, planning, engineering, and finance. We had a very good discussion and some helpful information. As a result of that meeting, we agreed to develop a form for department heads so they can better understand what their needs are and what they see as the future. As I mentioned last, last meeting, we had an, has chosen to be the alternate to the committee, so Marson, you know, Gray, and I am, so that will be the two representatives. Again, as long as we have one person from the board, that will be happy. We're meeting next week and the departments we're meeting with next week are the Public Safety folks.
Thank you. Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
We met last Monday also, kind of went over where their building projects are. We had allocated money for their track and they did not do it last fall just due to the timing of sports and everything. They did go out, get another quote. They're, they are going to do that. They awarded that contract to a company and it actually came in about $8,000 to $10,000 cheaper than what the bids were in the fall. So that they will be starting that right after school, after graduation, they will be starting that project. And they will also be redoing some science rooms. And they are doing, from the original $118,000 we gave them, they are doing some bathrooms, gonna start some bathrooms. They were supposedly supposed to have some numbers, some updated numbers on their bathrooms. Mike, did they send you anything on that?
I don't remember seeing that yet.
Okay. The 11 bathrooms at the high school that they want to redo, they originally came in at a cost of $118,000 to us and that's the money that we allocated. And that was, they were gonna do the demolition and replace fixtures themselves in the bathroom and that's where that cost came from. Then they went through with an architect, with NAFIS and Young, and to upgrade the bathrooms to make them handicap accessible, because they already did the ADA part of bathrooms. They have one male, one female. That increased the cost by another $120,000. And now, I don't know what the new cost is for, but Scott was talking to us, they anticipate that the bathrooms might be close to $400,000 to $500,000 to redo.
My understanding is that it went out to bid already and there was a bid opening and it was awarded. It was like $429,000.
Well, they don't have the money for it, so they couldn't have awarded a bid. I mean, the two, the two bids that I saw they had a meeting for was the science rooms and the track. I didn't see, I didn't see any notice of a meeting for bids for bathrooms, so I, I'm not sure on that. And at the communication meeting, that's...
Maybe Mike can check and see.
Sure. That's not what, I mean, he didn't talk about that. That's not what, I mean, he didn't talk about that.
He talks specifically about doing a limited number of bathrooms.
Right.
Well, that, that originally.
Basically conceded it was not, there were no funds for.
Or time.
Well, it wasn't, you'd have done right.
So, so he told us that he would get us numbers on that because they were, numbers were going to be coming back like within a week or so, so I, I haven't seen those yet. So, right now it's, all they have, all the money that they have is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which we allocated to them. So.
But now we're talking about four hundred.
That, that was his estimate. That was a best guess estimate on his part.
I thought we were doing stages too, like not all of them.
So was that, yeah, so, right, so was that amount of money for the portion of bathrooms that we could complete or for all of them?
He was talking all of them.
So we're at four hundred plus for all of them?
Correct.
Okay.
But that led to, that also led to a discussion in our long-range planning committee is at what point in time do you keep spending all of this money and not get any reimbursement? If at some point in time you're going to be renovating the high school, if it's within the next five years or so, I, you know, just to pick up timeframe, does it make sense to just keep putting all of this money in there and get no reimbursement at all? So that's, that's a discussion that we will need to have at some point in time.
I think that's the next person we're meeting with after, uh, Public Safety Committee.
Corrected. Right.
It seems ridiculous, spend all that money, we're not getting any reimbursement.
So, so that, that was the biggest discussion that we had on the Communication Committee. Uh, our next meeting is not until September with, uh, with the board.
How many bathrooms are there?
He said eleven.
Eleven. But that included the T, the faculty bathrooms.
So we're at forty thousand dollars a bathroom?
Yeah.
About. What are we doing to them?
I, I, I don't know, because he didn't have.
I mean, I haven't been in there in a long time, but aren't there a lot of bathrooms that have like two stalls and, uh?
Right.
I mean, what are we doing?
I, I don't know. He.
Who wrote the bid spec?
I don't know. I don't know that it.
You know what? Let's do this, Michael. Get a copy of the bid spec for the bathroom for the council at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay? Great.
All right. Town Manager Report. Item A, C-MED Update.
Yeah, um, the meeting, the last meeting was, uh, Thursday, May seventh, so there was a lot of, um, action taken.
You know what, I want to interrupt you in any and all opened bids. Just going forward, any and all open bids need to come before this council. Go ahead. Well, it's, I mean, that's just freaking ridiculous. Freaking ridiculous. And then you got people spouting off, you, you want to spend eighty million dollars to get forty million back, or you know what? Spend four hundred thousand. You know? We'll see the bid specs first and then I'll tell you what I think. You're up, Michael.
All right. Uh, C-MED, uh, lot took place at the last meeting. Uh, so it is essentially, uh, mo, there were three motions, uh, actually more than that, uh, but the three main motions to dissolve C-MED effective June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, um, to merge with, the second motion to merge with, uh, Southwest C-MED effective July first, uh, which is, which is the Bridgeport, and to identify a backup plan to ensure continuity during the transition. So, uh, C-MED effectively is, is no longer. Uh, so, um, in addition to looking at that, they've got to look at the pension fund and figure out the, uh, how they're going to close that liability and, uh, and use, possibly use the technology fund, uh, that they have in reserves to, to cover that. Um, that's a work in progress. We meet again, uh, Thursday, uh, to discuss that in addition to the, uh, decision to go to Southwest, of which we have the option to go there, but we've been pursuing, myself and Chief Seward's been helpful, in meeting with, uh, representatives from Valley Shore. Uh, and, uh, I will pass out, uh, just the recent communication we met, uh, on, well, we didn't meet, but we had a, uh, conference call on Thursday to talk about, uh, possibility and evaluation going to Valley Shore, which, uh, we certainly defer to Chief to talk to you about the technical aspects, but he's done the legwork and the fieldwork to confirm that our technical or equipment, if you will, um, could work, uh, just subject to their confirmation with their, uh, tech people in conjunction with bringing on Branford and other towns. This is a work that they're trying to do to get them on board for July first. We're saying in the letter, basically, our information, our equipment could essentially work as in place if we get some, some assistance from, uh, C-MED or the Tower on Parsonage Hill as well. So I, it, it's all coming together. The evaluation hasn't been complete yet, uh, but I think our, our best bet, if it true, it proves to be, um, uh, doable with Valley Shore, that, that we go with Valley Shore. Uh, I think the Chief would probably concur with that at this point in time unless there's some other obstacle that, uh, pops up during this process. Uh, so that is a, a fluid, uh, motion, uh, you know, trying to, to get an answer as quickly as, as possible, but, uh, they need time to evaluate on their end. Uh, so that's where we're at at this point. But I sort of, the Chief has a few things to add.
Good evening, uh, I'm Bill Seward, I'm the Fire Chief, live at thirty-two Meadowbrook Tribe. Um, I think it's really important for this Town Council to, uh, recognize the intricacies with C-MED itself, especially with the, uh, dissolving of C-MED New Haven on June thirtieth and many towns branching off into, uh, other venues, uh, providing medical patches between field personnel and the hospitals that we transport to. Uh, if, if you think of the area that, uh, we provide service to, and that only not includes North Branford, but the surrounding communities as well, because we provide mutual aid to, uh, to all the surrounding communities. So we, we transport our patients to a variety of hospitals everywhere from Hartford to the West David VA, to Milford, as well as the two New Haven facilities under Yale Healthcare and then up, up to Meriden. So no matter where you go, you gotta have good communications from the pickup point to the drop-off point and back. And that communications happens two ways. First through a, a UHF C-MED system and second through the Fire Department's VHF communication system. So you're operating in two different frequency systems. So when it comes to C-MED, and, uh, as Michael said, most of the communities have, uh, made a decision that they're going to go with Southwest C-MED. Southwest, West C-MED dispatches out of Bridgeport Hospital. So, uh, think of that. Think of a person seated in a dispatch center in Bridgeport Hospital communicating with units in the streets of the areas that we presently serve. That person sitting in the dispatch council is not familiar with the area, is not familiar with the local services. That person is not familiar with the personnel that are operating in the field. So the transition, uh, as most service chiefs see it, is going to be very difficult. Uh, it's not going to be timely either. And another point that was brought up at the meeting is that there needs to be a continuity of operations plan that hasn't even been discussed yet. So, uh, from June thirtieth to the time in which the actual communication starts from Bridgeport Hospital, uh, some type of operation plan has to be developed. So it's not as simple as this switch goes off and this switch goes on and we start talking. Uh, C-MED in the, uh, the infrastructure has transmitter, transmitter and receiver sites located throughout the area. Those physically have to be connected to Bridgeport Hospital, uh, by one of three ways. It can go by the Public Safety Data Network, which is a fiber system. It could go by the State Police, um, Microwave System, but more likely it's going to go by, uh, T-one lines that have to be arranged through Frontier Communications. Uh, and when the Director of C-MED Southwest was asked about that, uh, he didn't have an, an answer for the, the, uh, Board of Directors or anybody present at that meeting as far as the timeline was concerned. So that's, that's really, uh, a blockade to switching this one off in New Haven and this one on in Bridgeport. Um, that period in the interim, there's got to be a plan in place to carry over. As of July one, there's no C-MED budget to carry C-MED New Haven forward. So that's something that's got to be worked on, uh, this week. As far as, uh, we're concerned here in North Branford, C-MED has infrastructure at Ochinkowski Site on Parsonage Hill Road. Uh, C-MED put it there because of our reception being so bad for so many years. They used an existing antenna with existing cable. Uh, I had communication with Utility Communications who installed the infrastructure. I had communications with the Acting Director of C-MED. Uh, neither of those two individuals see no problem, uh, with our request to take over that equipment and have it reprogrammed to suit the needs of ourselves, uh, joining Valley Shore. It actually enhances the infrastructure for Valley Shore with this coverage area because they also see it as a, as a lapse in coverage for not only North Branford, but, uh, along the shoreline and this side of Branford as well as East Haven. Uh, so moving forward, it has a chance to, uh, to elevate their level of service. And, uh, keep in mind that no matter where you go, you're going to pay certain dollar amount. So, uh, C-MED got very costly. It's a union shop. Bridgeport Hospital, Southwest C-MED is not a union shop. Um, so their pay and benefits are a little bit different. So, uh, a couple of years ago, we tried to get C-MED into North Branford. And, uh, we did that for a number of reasons, but primarily, primarily, and this is what you really got to look at today, um, it enjoined more than one piece up. And when you do that, you get state money. So you get to say to yourself, well, why is C-MED New Haven closing and all the others still operating? It's very simple. Because the others have enjoined with communities and they are regional dispatch centers, they get the benefit of getting added funds from the state that we could have gotten that would have made C-MED New Haven survive and not close. So all these other C-MEDs enjoin', getting the state funds and they offer services, uh, at a very reduced rate. The rate that we're being quoted by Valley Shore is forty cents per capita. That's going to cost us about fifty-eight hundred dollars a year. Uh, we pay about three to four times that right now for C-MED New Haven. Um, so moving forward, um, as, as Michael said, we've been in this positive discussion with, uh, the Directors of Valley Shore and, uh, they need to bring it back to their board to take us on along with Madison Guilford and Branford. Uh, we would be that fourth town and, uh, serve the benefit, uh, of Valley Shore Communications. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed and with the infrastructure change in our town, that would serve to benefit us very well.
Then when's your next meeting?
The C-MED Board of Directors have a special meeting this Thursday, the twenty-first. Correct.
Do you think any of these things can be solved?
Uh, it, it has to be.
Okay.
It, yeah, there's no ins and buts. June thirtieth, C-MED closes and something else has to happen.
So they have to, yeah, so they have to come up with the pension liability and the capital.
Yes. So they're looking at the pension, as Michael said, they're looking at the pension liability that every town owes.
Right.
That belongs to C-MED. And then that being offset by the capital, uh, um, the CIP program that they have on file, that they've been using for their operating budget all along, uh, as to offset the total amount. So, uh, again, Attorney Ryan's still.
Yeah, we'll have some figure of close, you know, after Thursday's meeting in terms of the pension, uh, projections, if you will, in terms of what our liability will be. And, uh, we formally requested, I sent today to, uh, to be added to the agenda for the purposes of discussing the equipment at Parsonage Hill, uh, so that we can benefit from, from that. So, um, I talked with the Chairman, uh, First Lieutenant Frieda, he indicated that he'd put that on the agenda.
How do you handle the ramp-up period of Valley Shore? I mean, which scenario or?
It, it would, uh, with the exception of some in-house training, uh, houseman, uh, it's transparent.
Item B, Review of Self-Inurance Fund Policy.
Yeah, that, that's in there for your, uh, review. Um, nothing that you need to take action on, but I'm hoping that by the, uh, June second, if you have any comments. Anthony is still, uh, working to tweak that. We're waiting for input from, uh, Dom Wannicki on the Board of Ed's side as well. Um, we, we've kind of, uh, keep reading it, rereading it, but, uh, would like your, if anybody sees anything on that, certainly send comment to me or to Anthony so we can have that ready for, uh, June second.
So Anthony, how is this gonna, how does this work with the employees? So each check that the employees get on the town side and the Board of Ed's side, there's medical withheld?
Correct.
So how does that get into this account?
Uh, journal entry. Basically Barbara would take the money internally that is in a liability account.
And, okay, so, so every, every pay period, that money should go into this account? Is that not correct?
This fund.
This fund?
Correct.
Okay. And the town is the one that's ha, has control over this fund?
That's correct.
We, and, you know, we, we basically took it away from the Board of Education.
We took away the, their portion of the risk corridor.
Okay, so where's this fund then?
It's on our books.
Right, so the risk corridor and this.
It's going to be, our piece and their piece are going to be put initially on July first to get some seed money in there. And then on a monthly basis, there'll be a transfer from the Board of Ed into this fund for their pseudo-premium, if you will, based on how many singles, two persons and a family plans. And on the town side, same thing would be.
So there's two funds. There's the risk corridor fund.
Well, it's all, it's all goes into this pot of self-insurance reserve. There's, the major chunk is going to be initially that risk corridor funding, the eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars. And then every month will be chunks going in that are the same as being premiums, basically, from both the Board and the town going into this pot. General fund from the town transferring into the pot.
All right, so is the risk corridor in the same pot as the everyday money?
Of this fund. Yes, not everyday money as far as.
Right, it has to pay everybody's, it's going to pay everybody's bill. So the risk corridor is in that.
In the self-insurances reserve.
Same pot.
Correct.
And who has access to that besides Blue Cross, Blue Shield or whoever's managing the?
We would have access internally to wire money into there.
Okay.
Or we'll wire the money out for the monthly premiums, because there're going to be a premium bill to Blue Cross. And then the internal, as far as internal money going into that or external, in or out, which?
Out.
Out is Blue Cross. Blue Cross, basically. And us simply had to pay bills out of it.
Because the, the bills, the other bills besides medical expenses that Blue Cross would take out would be administrative.
Right. Right.
Which would basically be a bill from Anthem.
Right.
Right, for your administrative fees and all those other costs.
Exactly. Exactly.
And then reading, reading through this, I saw that, it says here that, uh, monthly, yeah, monthly you would be given a report to the Town Manager and the.
Super.
And the Superintendent and periodically you'd give a report to the Town Council and the Board of Ed. To me, the Town Council is the financial board of the town and if there's any, I mean, what, who cares what the Town Manager and the Superintendent? I mean, what, what's, what do they have? They don't have to raise the money. They don't have to manage the money. They don't have to make sure that the money's there. So it would seem to me that you'd want to change that and if there's any report given to anybody, it needs to come before the financial body of the town.
Okay.
But that's just me.
Well, it could just be included with the financial report that we get monthly.
Yeah.
For the town. When we get that, we should get the, the monthly.
Oh, so it would be bigger than, there's nothing going on?
Right. It's unremarkable.
Unremarkable.
It just so happens.
All right. No, I just think that instead of, I mean, periodically is a, is a vague, like, maybe every other year, we're going to get a report on how we're doing, you know? I think if there's a formal report going to be given to the Town Manager and the Superintendent, it ought to be run by the Financial Board of the Town.
Not a problem. So that's, that's section seven, are you talking about?
Yeah.
Monthly management reports.
Yeah.
If you like, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like the second last.
And then have we, I know we can't really encumber it, but this has nothing to do with what, and then I guess John, uh, maybe you already answered that. We, we really, like, one council can't encumber it, so, so say that everybody is really healthy.
Right.
And, uh, and our fund has more money than we think we need.
Right.
Um, how do we stop people from taking money out of that?
Uh, well, page two.
I mean, I would rather see us put less in than take, ever take money out.
Right. Talked about non, non-healthcare related, uh, transfers and, uh, if you commit it from this fund.
Mm-hmm.
And then it talks about, and that next to funding goal, uh, approval by two-thirds of the Town Council, I, this is another version you guys, this is another change we made, Mike and I was talking about the other day. Approval by two-thirds of the Town Council required to allocate surplus reserves. So in the event that there happens to be a situation where, you know, things are going really rosy, uh, it would take two-thirds vote in the council to shift the money. That was one of Mike's suggestions.
We all know that sixth vote is elusive. We all know that sixth vote is elusive.
Again, we're making, I got some more comments today from Dave Matthews Incorporated in this latest version. Again, Mike and I have been talking about it. So again, once Don gives me his comments, any comments you guys have, I'll change that with the monthly reporting going to the council and, what, council and Board of Ed or just council, what would you like?
Yeah, I think council and the Board of Ed.
Okay. All right.
The only thing I have is just to suggest that there's another item, add to the, amend the agenda to add nine I, which is discussion on the setting the mill rate and rate book. So memo from Anthony to do that, that was not in, on the agenda, so you'd have to amend to add that for tonight's meeting.
I suggest nine A, you can add it wherever you like.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add item nine I, setting the mill
rate for the 2015-16 fiscal year. Second?
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Sanlara?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armman?
Yes.
Councilor Foden?
Yes.
Councilor Succi?
Yes.
Councilor Nunez?
Yes.
Okay, we already did item five, the proclamation. Item six, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Item A, there's an invitation to the Memorial Day Parade. On behalf of the town, North Branford and Northford, the VFW Post 8294, I would like to extend invitation to you to participate in our Memorial Day Parade, which will be held on May 25th, 2015 at 10:00 a.m. This year, the parade will be held at the North Branford section of town. Lineup will be at Commerce Drive, which is located off Route 80 at 9:00 a.m. And the parade will start promptly at 10:00 a.m. After the parade, the VFW Post 8294 will conduct a service on the green at the North Branford Congregational Church to commemorate the true meaning of Memorial Day. The event will conclude with refreshments at Company One Firehouse. To confirm you would like to participate, please contact Michael at 203-484-6000 or email the Executive Secretary. Everyone looks forward to seeing you at the parade. Do you have, are you here this evening? Yes.
Did you want to talk?
Yeah.
Yeah. Could you come up to the microphone and just state your name and address, please?
I wasn't sure if it was now or at the end. My name is Susan Gualyumi. My husband and I live at 225 Village Street. We purchased about a two-acre piece of property 11 years ago, and 10 years ago, we moved into our dream home. We chose Northford for a variety of reasons, but one thing about the town has become a source of disappointment for us. The adjoining property, a small house, was purchased shortly after we moved in by a family that lived there for about five years. And then they started renting the property. And when they started renting the property, they stopped taking care of the property. We are not people who like to have contentious relationships with our neighbors, we're not fighters, but we're watching our property value suffer because of this particular piece of property. We have a right-of-way that runs through the property to get to our lot. And in fact, there's a second right-of-way, a new house that's going up. And I think they're going to have trouble selling that house with people driving in past this. I brought a couple of pictures with me, but there's one in particular that I think really, can I pass this over to you?
Thank you.
That top picture is an abandoned chicken coop or goat shed or something that was in pretty poor shape 10 years ago, but at this point has caved in. Around it, there's some various pieces of debris. It looks like a commercial stove range from a restaurant and some large pieces of metal. It all sits on the edge of the wetlands. There's a picture there also of a small pond that has become the receptacle for fall leaves and any kind of debris that doesn't get picked up. And there's another small shed that's up on the street and can be seen as you drive by that has been boarded up with plywood for the last four years. Nothing gets fixed. We came down, my husband came down to Town Hall last week thinking that we would need to file some kind of a blight report, particularly to get the goat shed taken down. And we were shocked to find out that there's no such statute or mechanism in effect in the town of North Branford. And it just seems that as people are building more and more upscale houses in this town, that it becomes that much more important to protect their property value and the people that are already here. I don't think anybody needs to legislate against bad taste or ugly colors or any of that. But I think when you've got a building like that, that's just got vines growing through the roof and rats living inside it, I think that something needs to be, needs to be done by the town so that citizens have some recourse. So I'm here hoping that you'll...
Have you talked to the property owners at all?
We've talked to them about things over the years. They're renting the property. They didn't even bother to plow out the snow to get at the house.
Is the property for sale or is it just...
No, it's not for sale. They're renting it. They bought it too high and I think they thought that they were going to sell off some building lots. They didn't realize it was all wetlands. So they've got too much money in a house they probably can't sell and they're renting it. And 225, well, we're 225 Village Street. The little house in front, the numbers are screwy because we're a back lot. But it's the property that rejoins Dr. Connolly's property and was in fact part of the Connolly property initially. Yeah, right across from the two Nubig sisters. Everybody knows. The Nubig sisters, Dorothy and Ann Nubig are directly across the street. And I know, they have also voiced concern over the way the property looks and the fact that it isn't taken care of. I just hope that there's something that the town has got in the works to keep pace with other towns. I know North Haven has a very strict policy about buildings with plywood on the front and dilapidated things. I think that goat shed is just an attractive nuisance. I think it's a problem waiting to happen. So I beg you to take up this issue.
The people that live there renting it, do they own it? They don't own it, do they?
No.
The people that are living in it are renters.
Do you know who the owners are?
The Arduinis. Arduini, actually, the senior Arduini bought it for a son who was newly married about five years, about 10 years ago, eight years ago. And then they have moved out to a bigger home with small children and they've had a couple of renters in there since. And they're not doing anything to keep up the property. They've let it fall to the renters to take care of the lawn and so forth, and they don't care. And it certainly isn't up to a renter to take care of a building like that that's collapsed. I mean, that's the owner's responsibility.
You want your pictures back?
No, you can keep them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll follow, we'll have a discussion regarding that.
Put that on the agenda.
I think it's important to keep property values up. You know, the town assets on the road.
And the discussion we hoped to set was the blight ordinance that you might want to move into. We're not, you know, we don't want to make this a personal matter, but the personal matter initiated by finding out that you had an ordinance.
We've actually had discussion about the blight ordinance about two years or three years ago.
Yeah, we've had them for years and years and years. They're very difficult to enforce, but we're going to get into that tonight.
I know, but at least it would be on the books. And I looked at the North Haven online and it's comprehensive and it's fair and it makes a lot of sense. And having it, just having it, might initiate some concern among citizens to keep your property of...
Oh, it's really just depending on somebody's good graces to fix something.
I agree with you, but we all know we can drive around North Haven and find buildings that look just like that. And we've had a lot of discussions about this and you almost need, you would need to hire a new person in town to enforce it. But, you know, I mean, there are some new members on the council, so we'll certainly look at it and maybe, maybe things have changed.
Sometimes just the threat, you know, getting a letter that says you're in violation is sometimes enough to get people's attention.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right. Resignations and appointments. Item eight, unfinished business, discussion in action.
Anthony, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, we're not going to do it yet because I spoke at least and it wasn't finalized yet. So we'll put it on the next agenda. Updates to the fine, is this still tabled? Item B, formation of selection committee for redevelopment of 1599 Foxen Road, North Branford.
What is it? About a year.
Tabled from May 5th, 2015.
Yeah, I don't think we were quite ready at the last meeting and I hope that enticed three volunteers to serve on a selection committee. Like I said, we're taking calls and two have said point-blank that they will be submitting a proposal. So we know we have at least two coming in. So it'll be more than that. Like I've been saying, all we need is one good one, but there's a process to it. So I'm hoping that, I think three is a workable. You can have five. I think that's workable too, but I don't want to tax the council any more than we have to in terms of special meetings or other additional meetings, so.
Al, you say you'll have time when?
Yeah, Al, this is definitely your...
Yeah.
So basically, you're looking for three members that'll meet, you know, with the...
Serve as that selection...
I mean, didn't you say you were going to bring the top two to the council anyway?
Well, we could. If that's the fact, if that, all that happens is two. We could just bypass it and just have the whole entire council serve as a selection.
I mean, I'd like to see, why couldn't we bring in two, if there's two or three of them? Bring them in, give them an hour, give a presentation to us and the whole town. What hurt does that do?
Right.
And then you don't have to go to another meeting. I mean, why don't you see how many people you've got?
I think to do justice, though, I mean, I think we're talking about not in a regular-scheduled meeting of the council. I mean, you would have a specific, special, another meeting, either way, you know?
We have a special meeting, a alternate Tuesday or something, but...
Yeah, that's okay. I'm fine with that. It'd probably best that way.
Let's do that unless you get a big number like 10 or something. If it's only three or something, we could do it in an evening and then we all could see it.
And that still leaves us time because the deadline's the 29th. Next meeting is the 2nd. If a flood of applicants come in, then, right, good point, we can adjust on the 2nd if we need to.
Okay, so we'll carry that over to June 2nd.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Item C, approval of the Asping Library Contract tabled from May 5th, 2015.
Yeah, I think that we could just skip over that and leave that for last after Executive Secretary.
All right. Item D, review of leases for town properties.
Yeah, so you were asking about the, you know, the farmland and pulled out the Auger pieces, started a bid, I think, several years ago. And this is the facilities use agreement that Larry Auger has in terms of, it's essentially a yearly renewal type process. And the same exists for Mr. DeFrancesco for his piece. And that's much smaller. I put in the rates as well in terms of Anthony put together of the payment history, if you will. You can see that that's a, back in 2004 with DeFrancesco, I think it evolved, I think it was, I'm not sure what type of agreement it was, but it evolved into finally getting them to sign the facility use agreement that mirrors what the Auger bid package was. So those two are in your packet and those are the two that we see on a regular basis, annual basis. And again, it's a, if the town felt, council felt that they wanted to discontinue, then you could do that.
So did Auger, Larry Auger pay for 2014?
He is paid in full, yes.
Okay, because there's no payments for 2014 shown on this.
He just made a second half payment last week.
Oh, okay, so the one made in January of 15...
It's for the 14th season.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure where you want to go in terms of this helps the planning group understand where real estate is and whose control and what the agreements are. I think that was, as I understood it, the motivation.
Does he have any plans for any kind of construction, I mean, any of these pieces this year?
Oh, no, not to my knowledge. I think it's still premature for us to...
Well, that's what I...
Why are these numbers all over the place? Do they use different amounts of land on an annual basis?
I, no, you know, just the, DeFrancesco started a thousand, went to 700 and it's been that way the last couple of years.
Well, how did he go from a thousand to 700? Did he just, you know, laterally decide it wasn't worth $300 more?
I can't answer that, other than I would have to, I would have to talk with him and see what, who we talk with. My guess is, my sense is that he's, yeah, that the amount of work that he had to put in, but I don't know, I just speculated that there was issues that he felt it wasn't worth a thousand.
But somebody on our side should be at least discussing this with the farmer. And you're saying you don't know who?
No, I don't know who authorized or approved the change from a thousand to 700, but it's been about 700.
Or how you came to that, I don't know, to begin with.
I don't, I've done the research.
1-6-2015. Mike, you're the town manager.
Yeah, but this is an agreement. I just don't know the details behind the agreement, how it got established.
Well, we can find out if it is.
I don't know what...
Anthony, can you give us a rundown on a report on all the property deals we used up over the years since it started?
So that's basically the list you have here, that's the...
It doesn't tell me anything.
This incomprehensible list, this is what we have.
Right. There's basically three pieces of, it's pretty straightforward. Three pieces of land, the Swychuck piece, the Highland piece, and the Auger piece. Swychuck piece is what DeFrancesco has rented, that's behind the police station in Public Works, close towards the river. And that's when it started, the first piece we bought. And the Highland piece is the corner property on Mill and Forest. That's what Larry Auger is, $200 a year for that. And then when he picked up the Auger piece in 2006, it's $10,000. So it's 10-6, you see for several years, that he paid, pays 10-6 and that it kept some of the land plus the ability to use the barns.
Do we have any, anything from the other two people that rent, that used the land? You just have Larry Auger, that's all we have?
Right. It's only Larry Auger and Joe DeFrancesco that leased the land.
Yeah, it doesn't, Joe DeFrancesco have a...
That's what Mike says, he's going to get a copy of the lease from him.
But now Auger paid $4,600 in...
And he paid $6,000 last week for the balance of his 2014 rent. So he's up to snuff now.
So he has paid 10-6 again.
Right.
He's current. Well, you know, the sense that I get that Larry, or when they would put out the bid, that was, that was a low bid. I don't know that he's, I talked with him, he's on the fence whether it's worth doing or not doing because of the ATVs and tearing it up, the land and so forth. So he's had some issues with, in terms of payment on time. If council doesn't want to do it, you don't have to do it. I just don't know how, I don't know if there were any more bids. I'd have to go back and dive into finding out if you, how many bids there were, if 10,000 was an accurate bid or 1,000 from DeFrancesco or 700 is accurate for that piece of parcel and land.
See, most of them, most places or municipalities or the water company, they would rebid every three to five years on a piece. You know, you don't want to make a farmer take a piece for one year or they're not going to, they're just going to... to, you know, abuse the nutrients and stuff that are there, and be done with it, but, you know, we probably, you know, probably just shouldn't go forward, you know, as a municipality, as a private landowner, you could give it to some, one guy and let it go, but, you know, there are a lot of farmers in town, and, 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 you know, maybe, maybe Mr. Auger is absolutely correct, and, you know, maybe if he went to bid, he bid less, and nobody else would, would bid on the piece because of all the issues that are there, but if you're just handing it to them every year, and expecting it to be the same, you know, that, it's not fair to them, or any other interested parties in bidding it, you know, so, you know, I, I don't know what to do with it, but it's, it's not, there's really no place in the world of renting land that it's like, you know, your land forever. You have to, and again, you can look for the water company, the way they handle it, they're very strict, you know, much stricter than the town is on what you can do on their land, but, you know, typically, it'd be like a three to five year deal, and then it would be rebid, and you can either get it, or somebody else could outbid you, or, or you could drop your bid, or anything else. Go ahead, Kurt.
I can just add one thing, I think I can hear it. I think I know what happened in terms of Joe's question about DeFrancesco. DeFrancesco farmed right behind Wall Field, where that, where the.
Yeah.
Extra field is, that was taken away from them at some, when Wall Field was constructed. They farmed the piece in the back along the Farm River, but I know there was, there's the property in front, they used to plant a, but as soon as we did work on Wall Field, that was the end of that, so that may have had an impact in terms of the change. I don't know the detail of how that occurred, but I think that's a factor in.
And then the other thing to look at is, you know, there's some big pieces of property, and, so they are being, they're being maintained by these guys, and, you know, if, if you're not letting them, you know, cut the hay, you know, it, it at least keeps the bushes down, you know, and, you know, it, it's something that Franny can't take over, and it doesn't take long for it to grow back to forest, you know.
Plus, you want to see it utilized, if we're.
So, right, I mean, if you want to keep it open, which is probably what, yeah, it's probably a good thing, you know, so it's almost like, you know, that's why, maybe, you know, maybe there needs to be a discussion with some of them on, you know, but there's definitely a benefit to the guys using the land.
As well as to the town, it sounds like.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's a benefit to the town, to have these guys using the land.
It's not.
And it's not going to make or break the town either way.
Could you come up to that?
Sure.
You, you people, a couple of months ago, reappointed me to the Ag Commission. We had an Ag Commission that was addressing this problem with the farmers, trying to work it out, and it is, it's a tough, what's more, the Ag Commission is down, I don't even know who else is on it, we haven't had a meeting in over a year, and we lost some key people that packed it in, and this was something that we were trying to work for the council, with the council on, and I have no idea who's on the Ag Commission anymore. Maybe you can enlighten me who, who went back on it.
Yeah, we'll find that out, we'll see what's on, who's on it.
Okay, because we might be able to help you out on that as well, okay? Thank you.
Okay, Formation of Public Safety and Emergency Communications Committee, item E, and I believe that was the handout.
Right, I just, in a moment of remarkable brevity, I put together.
[laughing]
A public safety communications committee that I know very little about in terms of what your ultimate goals are, I do remember you talking about, or, at one time in its history, it did have members from the Police Commission, the Fire Commission, I don't know if the council, but anyway, I put something down for you to, to look at, the duties are probably the thing that you might want to tinker with, I know it's, it, it seems to cover the emergency dispatch center, any matters, but this is, this is basically an advisory committee, the intent is to have a place for complaints to be aired in the first instance, and also for people interested in this subject to keep up with technology, and perhaps advise procedures or policies that may be useful in the matter of communicating safety and emergency situations to the town, but it can pretty much be whatever you want, it's.
Basically, two members from the Police Commission, two members from the Fire Commission.
I was trying to expand the, probably could have said it in one sentence.
I would kind of reword that last paragraph, though, so that it's not, the first thing isn't just complaints, I think there are issues, but I don't necessarily think that the first thing that the committee would do is review complaints, I think there are various public safety issues that need to be discussed, but I, I would kind of start that off, change that, beginning of that part.
I think, too, the, the committee looks more into the communication aspect, with the guidance of either police or fire chief, I mean, they have the expertise in communication. I mean, I was on the Communication Committee, I think, three years ago, and Andy Campion was on it, who knew a lot about communications, and, and I think this is more to start investigating regional dispatch, C-Med.
Yeah, if you just re, maybe rephrase that first sentence.
I, I, not a problem, I think I remember.
And then bring it to.
I think I probably had in mind, probably a month or so ago, maybe six weeks or so ago, we had a resident come in who complained about the response time, I believe.
A fire, a fire situation.
Yeah, and I, I thought that might be someplace for that person to go, than to come direct to the town council, because that committee might look into it.
Yeah, I agree, but I just think that to be the first thing in the duties of it, because I think, I think.
Communication with citizens.
To me is the first thing, is public safety communication, then maybe investigate.
Can we put the word issues in there?
Maybe issues is better than.
Sure.
I'm trying to think of another word, but I think that's, that suffices.
Yeah, I think, I think that would, that would, that would do it, issues.
From, from citizens.
You, you also might want to hear, you know, perhaps from the, the Police and Fire Commission, there may be something that they would want to articulate here, that's, that I wouldn't know to do, or this is general enough.
Well, anything, I could bring it back to the.
Yeah, I think we should.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should forward this.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
You can bring it to the fire.
Yeah, let, let them each put their fingerprints on this, and have it as relevant as possible.
Another thing is, though, Marie, when you, when you, when you look at this, you guys will be able to talk about whatever you want to talk about, I mean, basically, it covers everything in there.
No, I'm okay with that, I just think.
You just want to frame it.
I, I don't, I like, I prefer the word issues rather than complaints.
Yeah, you just want to frame it in.
Yeah, it's, it's too negative to.
Negative, right.
Already done.
All right, you can't look at complaints.
Pardon?
You can't look at complaints. Yeah, no complaining, Marie.
They can look at issues.
You know, I think, too, more.
Send complaints over here.
You know, over the next, over the next few years, I mean, they're looking at regional.
Well, without, it's on the news, it was on the news again today about regionalization.
Right, and I think, you know, that's something that we should take seriously, and look at.
So is that what we're going to do, you and I'll bring it back?
Yeah.
For those questions?
Yeah, I think that would be very important.
Before we have the switch over especially.
Yeah. All right, item F, review of bond process and municipal projects.
Yeah, this is something we discussed at the last meeting, and looking, I think I indicated that what you wanted to do within the scope around the recreation, both, you know, the basketball, tennis courts, over to Memorial Field, there was a blind item placeholder, 350,000 in there, and looking back, working with Pam, we're trying to get a quote from Hending, both Hending Tennis, we have a verbal at 405, although they haven't submitted the written yet, and then she's still work, working, waiting to receive from Dalton Tennis, as well as another, another vendor, looking at those numbers for just the tennis court and basketball courts with fencing, so my concern is that, to do what you want to do, you're going to well exceed the 350, and possibly by, I'm, I'm thinking about 150,000 to, to about a half a million, to do everything you want to do there, if that's, unless you, you know, that's what you want to do, of course, you can scale back, you want to scale back or make the 350 work, we'll try and make the 350 work, but I just wanted the expectation to know that, how far we think we can get with the 350, if, in fact, the tennis courts and basketball courts with the fencing and electrical there is, is the first focus, then the fields, it could, I could have it wrong, you want to go the other direction and go with fields first, we'll make it work, if that's where you want to stay, the other, for the first half of that, in terms of the road project, talking with Kurt and Fran, there's also some concern about roads that don't fall into the Mill and paving, or reconstruction, or chip sealing, that they need some course level program to try and help roads like Totucket, that we're not going to get to for some time, but that, to try and preserve those, and the other one was wood, would you.
There's various ones throughout town.
Who are the biggest ones, anyway?
If I could just add, they need a. A shim and leveling course to hold them together, ultimately, a lot of these roads will be chip sealed, but you need something on them to bind them together, hold them over until the time that we chip seal them, our goal on, like at Totucket Road, or a lot of the other, is, is a chip seal, it's a low cost maintenance item, keeps the road in pretty good shape, and it's an affordable option, but a lot of them need a little work beforehand, we did it on Valley Road a few years back, and then we'll be chip sealing that within the next year or two, to seal everything and keep things together, but, and the number, Fran and I, it's a ballpark number, it's a grab, we could spend, whatever he gave us, we could spend, and then probably spend it the best way, but we have to be reasonable in terms of what, what we think is appropriate, I'd like to also, since I'm here, just sort of throw another one by you, the state has a new program, it's administered to the council governments, it's, it's called Lotzip Funding, they used to have, we did projects under, like, the SDP program, and you had to meet very stringent design criteria, you can only use it on collective roads, and a lot of times, we, we once tried to do it 20 years ago on Twin Lakes Road, and it didn't work, because it would have changed the whole character of the road, if we built it to those state federal design guidelines, we have a new program, that just came out, I believe, last year, and Guilford's actually doing a project, they got one of the first ones in the region, where you can do reclamation projects, you can, it's basically a glorified Mill and Page, they're doing it on West Lake Avenue off of Route 1, sort of my thought was, try to submit for a project through the council governments on the Lotzip program, Twin Lakes Road, in a couple of years, that needs it, and we reconstructed that about 20 years, a little over 20 years ago, it's, it needs, the top course of payment needs some work, it's probably a $750,000 job, where these programs, the town would have to pay for the engineering, but the rest of the costs is paid through the, basically a grant, I'd like to do the same thing, submit, we talked about Woods Hill Road being, it's in terrible shape, we'd probably have to shim and level it to get us by a couple of years, but we could probably get this under that Lotzip program, get it funded, oh, we're, we're stuck with this design money, that one needs a little more work, it's only a 20-foot wide road, you should be widening it to 24 feet, and then doing that from Route 17 up to the Wallingford Town Line, but their road's in pretty good shape, it, it's a good opportunity, and basically, all I really need is sort of a nod from the council, to go ahead and, and try to get the process going.
Go for it.
And I'll do that, I mean, it'll come back, and then there'll have, there has to be resolutions and like, from the town council, when it gets further along, we're just trying to program it within the available years, the council.
I can hand for you.
I've got everything written up, and I'm, I'm pretty much ready to go, but I wanted to make you aware of it, it's a good opportunity to get significant work on.
Yeah, Kurt, go get us all the grants you can.
Yeah, and, and again, we're limited in terms of what roads we can use them on, and so we, Fran and I have been looking at it, and this is really the, sort of the first batch we'd like to sort of get.
Do you have in your file somewhere a comprehensive list of all the roads that require repairs?
Oh, yeah.
Prioritized and approximate costs?
Yeah, and I, I even, costs vary, I, I have preliminary costs, we actually have a, I've been doing, maintaining a road program for 25 years, with a listing, when we did the work, and I have costs associated with it.
With, if that's true, rather than speaking in generalities about, oh, by the way, Woods Hill Road needs work, and Totucket Road needs to be, have something done to it, we would be better served, I think, if you gave us a comprehensive list with priorities, with costs, and with those roads that lend themselves to, to government grants, then we have something to work with, because all we know are dollars and cents, when you tell us a road is a piece of garbage, the only way we know it is when we drive over it and our car rattles, otherwise, to me, it looks like a road, and I can't, I don't have the ability or the expertise to figure out what's wrong with it and what it needs, you and Franny do, but I think you got to give us that.
Yeah, and I, and I have an overall map, which is a, sort of a hand, it gives you a pretty good overview, and you can see what we have, we have all the detail, but some of the detail was prepared by the outside consultant, and, and the costs vary, I mean, that's, they may have selected a treatment alternative that we may, Franny and I would look, would change, but I'll, I'll certainly get you something to give you the overview, and then we can go from there.
You also know, then, what roads may qualify for this new program as well?
Yeah, I, I can give you that, too, in terms of collective roads, and some of them, it just won't apply, West Pond Road is, is one, and if anyone's familiar with West Pond Road, the geometry is such a situation, if you try to make too many major changes over there, you have such an adverse impact upon the neighborhood, some of those are better done locally, just because of the fact that we can do, we can do it a little bit less, and make it fit with the neighborhood, but, but I'll, I'll put something together, absolutely, I, I just, this is just one, I wanted to get going in terms of grant applications, and try to get us on a list for, for additional funding, so.
So, so Kurt and Michael, regarding this memo, I think that, you know, I think that, you know, so we, we bonded the $5 million, and didn't really know what stuff was going to cost, or where it was going to go, I think that we'd all agree up here that we want to fix the basketball and tennis courts, and get that done right, we know that, you know, we know that it's got some issues, we need some under drains, and needs to be fixed.
Electric pole.
So, if, so, so, so my thing is, you know, we, we want to fix those things that need fixing immediately, we want to fix them right, so if that means that in the short term, we have less money somewhere else, or, you know, this was three-year money, there's nothing to say that next year's council can't bond more money to fix some of this stuff correctly.
Or add to the.
Well, we just want to take on that first project and do it correctly, then whatever, you know, we can't accomplish, now we'll, you know, address later, is what you're saying.
Right, I mean, I don't think, we, we don't want to just go in there and put overlay on the basketball, we've already done that.
Right, because we're worried about a field somewhere that.
Yeah, so, so what, what do you need from us, again, I'm going to go with Joe, that, you know, we, you know, Fran and Kurt know what they need to do, I know Franny would love to have all the money on the roads.
Yeah, we, we can prioritize, I mean, whatever the number is, I mean, and we have a number to.
I mean, because we were specific on money, do we need to?
No, no, I, I just.
Well, I mean, why can't you guys just?
Yeah, we can do it.
Take that $5 million.
Yeah, and this was written, I mean, it was gathering information, written before Kurt, and I sat down and gave you the, the Lotzip concept in terms of, you know, the opportunity.
Okay.
To pull some of this out, gives that flexibility, obviously, to cut.
To pull some of this out, gives that flexibility, obviously, to cover the, the focus on the fields and tennis.
Yeah. Lots of things help us in terms of some of the things that we were targeting. Now we're hoping to go for a grant.
I mean, we all knew that we hadn't, we had gotten behind. So this was like a shot in the arm to try and save stuff so it didn't cost us 50 million down the road.
Yeah. And again, the roads, what Fran and I have always said, anything, we can't do it all in one year. It has to be phased in to make it a manageable, doable program. We talked about Burland, that area, that vision as a project. I've written up a scope on it, and, you know, we'll bring that back in terms of trying to get somebody on board to put it all together. But breaking this into reasonable projects and then phasing of the implementation of all these, these various projects. So, yeah, we can actually, you know, we can put it together and give it more definition.
For the basketball and tennis courts, was that going to be done this year? When were we going to do it?
It was probably, hoping to get it in the fall, because the high school uses the tennis courts in the springtime. So they're just finishing up their season right now, so most likely that would have to happen by the time you got the bids and everything else. I don't envision it happening before fall with that. I guess unless the quotes that they get, if they're on state contract, then they don't have to go out to bid. And so then it's just working around their schedule.
Yeah, that shortens the timeline.
Right.
Okay. Item G, request to change.
I think Bill wants to address this facility that is, is over.
I do. With regards to the bonding project, as we came into the budget session, we had worked fairly aggressively on ascertaining the funds to build our fire training facility, AKA as a thing called in town, the Smokehouse.
I don't know who's calling it that.
So we've been able to obtain more concrete numbers. No pun intended, because it has to do with the concrete and the footings and the foundation. So I, Councilwoman Angeloni was great enough to make a recommendation for 350,000. I'm requesting an additional $20,000 to fulfill our obligation of the bonding project. That gives me room, that leaves me a little contingency for work on the site as well as finished work on the site.
So who is doing the, does this outfit come in and do that work, or does that work get bid separately?
The RFP, which I'm about 90% complete with, is a turnkey construction project. The onsite work will be in-kind services from members of the fire department and Franny's crew out.
But the, so the foundation, though, for this building is done by this outfit?
Historically correct, yes. Yes. We're still putting the feelers out there that, that number may be a little high, so we may, I may revise the RFP and look for a different direction on that as a cost savings.
I'm just wondering if, if, I mean, who is this outfit that builds this? Where are they from?
It's, it's called Fire Training, Fire Facilities Steel Fire Training Towers out of Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. They're actually doing one in Wallingford. They're, they've done one in Glastonbury, and they're doing one in Killingworth. So they're a very highly regarded fire training facility company throughout the U.S.
Did we look at, I mean, we've got a lot of, we've got a, comes to mind at least three concrete guys in town.
We're working on it.
Are we sure that we don't want to look that way?
We actually have a meeting tomorrow night.
I would think that, you know, a foundation's a foundation. There's going to be drawings, it's going to have to be a certain size, certain strength.
And, yeah, and we have all that, correct. And we know what the price of concrete is. And again, it's my goal to have this completed in under four months. I don't want to deal with any winter.
Can I get a copy of the specs for the foundation?
Absolutely. Yeah, sure.
And I think they're doing a compaction test, too, on the, before they.
Yeah, we're going to do a, 3,000 PSI is the required soil test in the area.
Wasn't there other money set aside for that, too? Or there wasn't?
We have, we have $20,000 in a, another account from a couple of years ago, and I would like to keep that off to the side for anything that may come up during this process after the fact. And the, the concept is to, around the training area, to put crushed stone, to use that money to obtain crushed stone from, actually from Tilcon and take care of that finished product. But like I said, we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow night with the vendor.
Where is that at?
My office. And you're more than welcome to attend, 7 o'clock.
Okay. See how I would get myself into another night out. I would, I would just say this, why don't we not act on this 20,000 tonight?
Well, it's all part of the bond lead money, so.
Okay. Let's, let's, I mean, we meet every couple of weeks. So let's, let's get, let's get a firm number. I, you know, I'm just kind of stuck on this, that I think a company out of Wisconsin may be charging us more money to do the concrete work than we can get it done locally. I don't know that.
Our thoughts exactly.
Maybe they do it all the time, it would be cheaper.
When we saw the numbers, I don't know if that's right.
Yeah, they're doing, I think they're doing their due diligence, because I know the conversation, and, you know, they're having other outside people look at it. So you should probably look at it, too.
Good.
I have PDF files of the foundation layout, and I can get them to you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Okay. Where are we? G, request to change membership of Haz Waste Committee from 12 members to nine. Oh, we did that.
No.
We didn't do that.
We didn't do it?
No, we didn't do it.
No.
There was a question as to the, the process, I think, and it was a request from Haz Waste to be reduced, but whether that had to be done by, you know, the ordinance or if it was going to be a resolution. Previous councils had done that in the past, had increased from 10 to 12, which I found and use that as a template for this resolution. But certainly defer to John as to the process is correct, if that's the way we should proceed, or if it should go by way of ordinance.
Well, I think that from your investigation, Michael, that this committee was never the product of an ordinance. So we're just, you know, passing a resolution, amending a resolution, which probably the, well, not probably, in my view, the ordinance, it ought to be an ordinance, and it ought to be rewritten, as opposed to just making resolutions. It's not a, you know, so the motion that you have is a motion for a, to simply reduce the population on the committee, but it should be, the whole committee should be an ordinance. It went from separate committees to a combined committee, but never by way of an ordinance. And that's primarily what we do. When we want to, when we want to make a body or pass a law locally, it's by ordinance. Unless you, unless, you know, some people may treat a resolution as synonymous with an ordinance, but, and that would be okay if you went through the formality of having a public hearing, but as far as we can tell, that never happened.
I don't think it's something we have to rush through, so should we ask the town attorney to do an ordinance on it and put it on the next agenda for final, final vote?
Does it have to go to public hearing if it's an ordinance?
Yeah.
So we'd have to vote to go to public hearing, have the public hearing, and then adopt the ordinance.
Yeah.
And that's appropriate procedure, that's what we ought to do.
Yeah. And it's fair, and in this particular case, it should be fairly ministerial. I mean, it's going to be the same thing that it presumably is now, unless that hasn't been recorded anywhere, in which case we'll have to breathe some duties and responsibilities into it. But I, it is the proper way to go, and it's not an insignificant, you know, committee, I would think, particularly in this day and age.
So let's do it correctly.
I'd like to move that we table this motion, or resolution, to the next meeting. Have John, if there's an ordinance for it, and hold it further here.
Okay.
The next meeting.
Move by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Council Armond, to table. Roll call.
May I have a vote?
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Armond.
Yes.
Council Foden.
Yes.
Council Pucci.
Yes.
Council Rhodes.
Yes.
Item H, update on Route 8139.
Public hearing, we're going to have to put on the agenda.
Yeah, you can amend the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda to put on the, on the agenda for the next, for the next meeting, because I think you have to have a certain number of days in between catastrophe, the paper has cut some, 15 days.
You mean to establish a public hearing for the ordinance?
Which ordinance are you talking about now?
An ordinance for the hazardous waste committee.
Well, I think probably I should draft it first and have it free at the next council meeting, because you may want to make changes at that time, and that would be the final document that we put out to the public.
All right. Item H, update on Route 8139 project.
Good evening. Including your packet, there's a brief email from myself to Mike Paulus regarding the DOT's proposal to basically reconstruct the radius on the Route 8139 intersection. If you recall, a while back, they basically said they were just going to pave the grass strip between the existing curb and the walk and let vehicles ride up over it and let it be at that. We had sent the letter on behalf of the council to the DOT representatives, and basically they came back, there's a color-coded version of the proposed improvements, and basically what they are doing, they're moving the, widening out the radius, and they're moving the curb back up to about five feet from where it is existing. And it includes moving the curb, the grass strip, and they're moving a good section of the walk to try to get out of harm's way. It appears to be, you know, in line with what Fran and I have been asking all along. They bought that, but now they're, they're actually doing it. And this, this should work. Doesn't mean everything will be 100%, because there's always somebody that's going to run over something, but it should alleviate, if you drive by there, you can see where the traffic is, and it should alleviate 95-plus percent of any of the issues over there.
Good job, Kurt.
Thank you, Kurt.
So, all right.
So, yeah, we were happy with it, and also they're going to do some work at Central Plaza. There's a bottling of house issue there, and as part of that, they'll be doing that as well. And the anticipated timeframe is sometime in July, that they'll be doing that work.
Now, could you take a stab at getting them to remove the riprap on the slope of Tilcon and turn it into a lawn?
Believe me, we've been trying on that whole, the whole issue, and really we're grateful.
Just an overall resolution, they treat us as if they thought we were Guilford.
Yeah, there you go.
And they'll just spray that green stuff.
Well, actually, they do have to come back and spray some of that on some of the areas. So they'll be doing that after Memorial Day parade, because they got to do the town green, which is one thing, I think, we gained the green, I mean, a little bit of the green. I think that's going to work pretty good after the parade.
There was also some questions from some residents that live on North Street there that construction signs are.
Construction signs.
Are still there, and the crosswalk hasn't been painted by, in front of the church.
I haven't got an answer back on that one. I, the signs, they can't take them down, do their totally dumb construction. They told, that'd probably be August, after they do some of this work. It's a liability issue.
Okay.
So, yeah, I forwarded them to the inspector, and he's pretty good in terms of follow-up. But I haven't heard on the crosswalk, and I'll, I'll find that out.
They're going to be doing work there on the intersection. It's only a few feet down to paint the crosswalk that was supposed to be painted there.
Yeah.
So maybe it could all get done.
I'll check on the staffs of that, absolutely.
They'll get people stopped. Kurt, before you go, down on, on the 139 Valley Road end.
Yep.
They, I don't know how long they think they need to leave it up, but right in front of the, where I put my draft horses out, the silt fence is still up in there, and I was looking at it, I'm like, you know, I should probably take that out. It's hard enough to try to keep the place looking nice without having to do their job, too. So ask them whether.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that, because it's something they should take care of.
You know, because it, yeah, it's, you know, that's, that's been long enough.
It's been long enough, right.
And thanks to Bill Van Willigen, he did the whole end of Valley Road, so he took it out for that. But, you know, coming up along the hill, the silt fence is all, you know, with my stuff there.
All right, I'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Item nine, new business discussion in action, approval of the contract for the roof replacement at Totucket Valley Elementary School.
Right. We had the draft at, Paul from John's office had, I reviewed with Tom Hibbard, they'd worked out the, anything they needed to be worked on, so I think, I think it's gotten the review and blessing at this point. Can we go ahead with, with awarding that contract to?
When does school start this year?
Starts August. The first day for students is August 27, I believe.
So I see in this contract, it says substantially complete by the 21st. So John, would we want to, would we want to make this a times-of-the-essence contract?
Well, based on the conversation you had earlier this evening, and actually, I think you had mentioned that it didn't seem to be so critical that there still be the last stages of this construction going on.
Yeah, I think the last stages aren't, aren't that big of a deal.
I mean, we can, you know, we can demand anything we want if they can do it. I'm not sure that it compromises the original bid documents or anything like that, but.
I mean, it says, it's, am I reading that right? It says here that they'll be substantially complete by August 21st. Is that what they're signing? So.
The other thing that you had suggested in the last contract when we did the high school roof, is the unit ventilators that were replaced, that the roofer was in charge of taking them off the roof and then putting the new, placing the new ones, and then our first, the Board of Ed personnel connected them, you know, disconnected the old and connected the new. And I don't know if that's in this contract or not also.
Well, a fair number of them are only being replaced and accepted the ad alternates with the standing seam roof, all the unit ventilators in those areas are.
Could you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry, thank you.
Since the ad alternates with the standing seam were accepted.
Yeah.
All those unit ventilators are new with new ductwork, because you had to pipe them out. So we replaced all those units, all those van units, and we actually elected to upsize them a little bit, because instead of coming just straight through the roof, straight shot, we have to take them and run them down.
So that's part of the bid?
That's all part of the bid now. Yeah, a lot of those unit ventilators are, are already being replaced, and will be installed by a mechanical contractor, actually.
Okay, so on the.
There's very little that's not new.
So on the flat roof.
Mm-hmm.
Are there unit, any unit ventilators on the flat roof? It looked like there was something on it.
There are a few, yes.
Okay. So.
Those are, what, what happened in the last one is the town elected to purchase the new, the new unit ventilators, and the roofer installed them. And I don't see that as a problem, because in reality, the roofer would rather install a new unit, because he doesn't have to worry about, you know, taking off an old unit and handling it with a great deal of care and making sure it fits back on, you know, on the curb. He just gets to remove it, throws it away, probably sends it out to be recycled. And what the town had done is they actually purchased the new units and supplied them to the roofer.
Right.
And the roofer, it actually saved the roofer time and money.
Because they're not reimbursable by the state.
They weren't reimbursable by the state, so it didn't make sense for the town to purchase them through the contractor. That would have romped the cost.
Correct.
You, 20%.
Because that's the next item on our agenda, is replacing the unit ventilators.
And it wouldn't be a big cost, because, because I said, as I said, where the standing seam roof is, have been elected to be installed, those are all new, anyway. And there were a fair number of unit ventilators on that front wing, because there were a lot of bathrooms and other little interior spaces in there, and those are the ones that had small van units.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Titan is the, is the roofing company.
So, Titan is the roofing company, was the low bid on this?
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the town council awards the roof replacement project at Totucket Valley Elementary School under project number TMP 099DBZN to Titan Roofing for a total bid of $2,481,000.
Second.
Dollars.
Moved by Counsel Anceloni, seconded by Counsel Rose. Roll call?
May I have a call?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitman?
Yes.
Counsel Anceloni?
Yes.
Counsel Arman?
Yes.
Counsel Vannen?
Yes.
Counsel Foden?
Yes.
Counsel Pucci?
Yes.
Counsel Rose?
Yes. So, I want to get back to the color.
Green.
Who picked, yeah, is it green? I mean, who picks the color? I mean, realistically, the town council would have picked the color.
I know it hasn't been discussed at the building committee, at least the last two meetings and the last one was last week and that's when, I mean, they didn't even have the bid opening documents, really. They had nothing at that meeting, but.
So, tell them it'll be green.
So, they didn't discuss anything.
Yeah, we told the architect it's green.
Right. It's green.
It's green.
All right. Item B, replacement of roof ventilators at Totucket Valley Elementary School.
Okay, this came up at our communication committee meeting that we had with the Board of Ed. When we did the high school roof project, the council had elected, voted to replace the roof ventilators where, and we took the toss of the roof ventilators out of the project. Because it just made sense to replace them all when you were replacing the roof, so you didn't have any issues. So, I guess that there's an email in our pocket here from Don Wenicki giving some estimated costs, but I think this is probably overstated because he doesn't realize that some of these are already going to be, because he has it down for 20, it looks like 22, unit ventilators. Which some of these are probably being replaced because of the pitched roof. Because in his email, he said, "We need a final decision on what will be pitched and what will not because this could affect the fan specifications." So, he has an estimated cost here at $43,000 and I'm guessing that that is going to be less than this. So, because some of these are already in the bid.
Well, I mean, can we table this till we get an accurate count on how many?
Well, I thought someone was going to be here from the Board of Ed tonight because that was our discussion that we had, unless they sent Tom. I'm not sure if they talked to you about this.
They did not.
Okay.
So, could I, sorry to be rude, Rose, but so, you're the architect for the roof. Wouldn't that kind of fall under your realm of responsibilities to make sure that our unit ventilators are, we got the right count and they're put in the correct place? And so, why wouldn't, instead of this being before us, why wouldn't he be talking to Don Wenicki and then you could tell Don what we're doing new by bid? And then we could get an accurate paper back in front of us.
What they want is, they just want to know if we will pay for the unit ventilators out of the cost of the project and then they will get all of, you know, are they going to take the cost out of their operating budget or are we going to take the cost out of our project?
They should take it out of your operating. We don't have a final number.
Go ahead. I talk over them all the time.
Well, I'm not a member of council, so I'll try not to do that. You know, the unit ventilators are being replaced underneath the standing seam roof. That will have an impact, I think, on that number that he gave you of.
So, everything under the standing seam roof, we're getting new unit ventilators in our bid that we just approved?
Probably rooftop fan unit is a better description of it. Just let me, you know, I can get a, take those out and get a better count and maybe just get somebody down here and get a better handle on the number real quickly in the next week or so. So, that we can refine that, that number and get back to you on that.
So, we'll just put this on hold till.
Yeah, to the June 2nd, I mean, I think.
What date is it in June?
June 2nd. It's the first Tuesday in June, so, June 2nd, I believe is the first Tuesday is our meeting. But I think the last time they were able to order them through Granger, once they had the sizes and everything and it, they just did it during the project.
There's nothing unusually large out there. I think these are pretty much standard units and should be available within a few weeks.
Right.
Or less.
Thank you.
All right, item C, review of administrators' salaries for the year 2014-15.
Yeah, I think we're going to skip over that.
Yep. Item D, discussion of possible referendum on bond expenditures.
So, I brought this up at the last meeting and I've done some research around some other towns, but I think, you know, instead of me doing the research, maybe Michael could have Lisa, the town clerk, I think would be the one that could check with other towns and their charters and what they have. Because some of them are, some of them, you'll be surprised, some of the big fancy rich towns around us, they can't bond $2 million without going to a referendum. And I'll tell you right now, I don't agree with that, but I don't want to see, I don't want to see five simple votes here bonding 80 or 100 million for a new town hall or a new high school without the people of the town having a chance to come out and vote on it. And I feel that when we actually put this into it, we're going to actually put it in English, the question.
Right.
And they're going to be told, you know, that last question on the referendum was so confusing that it was ridiculous. But, so, we're going to, we're going to have to, you know, I feel we need to put something out there so people know, yeah, if you want to build this, you know, and you have a property that's worth $400,000 in town, it's going to raise your taxes 500 a year for the next 20 years. How do we determine what the threshold will be, though? We're going to talk about that. We'll get, I think, you know, the town clerk, and I did talk to her, but as she informed me, it really needs to come from Michael to tell her to do something, you know. So, anyway. I'd like to weigh in on that too. I mean, I think it's very, very important not to lose grasp of what we're talking about here. I don't think we're talking about, like, repairing the roads. I think big capital projects, the taxpayers need to have a voice on this. I mean, because you can't have five people spending $100 million to build a new school or a new town hall or something like that. Let everybody weigh in on it and if that's what they decide to do. And if the whole town votes for it. They do it, yeah.
Right.
Taxpayer beware. Right. And I got to tell you, every town, every town around us has something like this. Every one of them. So, I think, you know, if we have Michael, and I'm going to say, the thing that surprised me is every one of them was lower than I was thinking.
Really?
You know, I mean, because I don't want to stop government. I don't want to stop fixing the roads.
Well, because, right, because, you know, we're talking $5 million to fix roads.
Right.
So.
But, you know, we can, in my simple financial mind, I figured, you know, we can, we all know we need to fix the roads. But, you know, the whole point of this is to give people some say when we're going to put them in debt for a long time and a lot of debt.
Yeah. And put a number to it.
So, I think for tonight, all I would ask is for Michael to ask Lisa to get back to us at the next meeting with the surrounding towns, how they've written it. And a lot of them are selectmen towns and so they're a little different. They only have three people that would be voting on it, but they have financial boards and so, you know, there is a lot of information out there and then it'd be up to us to come up with the number if we even want to do it.
I think it's a good idea.
What was the cost of the referendum on the town budget question?
I think it's close to $4,000 or $5,000, but I'd have to defer to Anthony on that.
Just a round number, $4,000 to $5,000 is about what it costs.
I think it was like eight last time, I mean, the full day one, so $4,000 to $5,000 for the.
Noon to eight o'clock.
$4,000 to run the referendum.
You can't really draw a comparison to that, though, because people don't turn out to vote on our budget referendum for the simple reason that they know it's not binding. It doesn't mean anything. They, so nobody goes.
Well.
And that's.
Well, that's not exactly the case. I mean, if we.
It is the case, Dan. It was the way it was written. When it was written, it was written to deter people from actually coming out.
You mean the charter revision?
Charter, right. Are we trying to change that? I think the question was worded on.
It was turned down, a charter revision. We did try to change it.
Yeah, but those questions, Jill.
Were too difficult.
It was confusing.
It's pretty much the same question every year and the turnout is 10% or less. Fundamentally, that process is flawed. So, what the solution is, I don't have it off the top of my head, but the process is flawed. I'm really just driving that, what is the cost of a referendum if we choose to do this? Because we ought to know that as well as what the threshold amount should be.
Yep. And that's why I think that we want to make our threshold amount so it's something that really is going to have a substantial impact on taxes rather than fixing the road.
Yes, I agree.
Well, if I may, the town manager asked me, what about the charter? Would we have to amend the charter? And actually, we don't because we have in the charter the power of initiative. Any citizen could make the same proposal that you're talking about by petitioning the council to have the power to put every bonding issue up for a vote or a public hearing. That's in the charter right now. Of course, the power of initiative and the referendum all have a minimum turnout of 5% signatures or something like that, which is, you know, you had the experience recently with the referendum on the budget. So, what you would be doing is essentially, if it doesn't go through one of the, go through the process of the power of initiative, and maybe some council person might want to technically try to do that, we may be talking about an amendment to the charter, which obviously can be done. I think you have to think how you want to do this.
Okay.
Well, let's see what, let's.
And there's nothing to say that you can't have an advisory public hearing on any bond offering like you do on the budget. I mean, you don't have to amend the charter, you don't have to pass an ordinance. You can just say, you can just decide that, look, this is a lot of money, we think it's a good idea, but I think we're all going to sleep a lot easier if we allow the public to have a voice in this. And then you can change your mind if you want to without being told to do that by a provision in the charter or the ordinance. Or you can do what you're talking about. I haven't seen, you know, it'd be interesting, I think definitely, to see how other towns handle that.
Yep.
And whether it ties their hands or whether it doesn't.
Okay.
So, in the charter, we have a threshold for when there's a vote, for like our budget, for example. Is that same threshold anytime we go to a vote on any issue? Whether it's, you know, binding or not?
Just that.
It's actually, it's actually 20%.
20%.
Yeah, you, yeah. On a petition for initiative for the vote, I think it's 5% for signatures on the petition.
But if we were to have, if we were to have a vote on, let's say we're going to build a school for $100 million and now it's going to go to a vote, we don't have to meet that 20% threshold in order for that to be binding by the vote, correct? Does that make, is that?
You're talking about presently?
Yeah, yeah, per charter.
Well.
There's no vote per charter.
No, you don't.
You have nothing right now.
You make the decision right now. And in between you just making the decision and doing something more formalistic, like having the, going through the initiative or amendment to the charter, there's all types of informal stuff in between where you can just as a body decide, well, a majority of us think this is a lot of money. Or it's for a project that I'm not sure is going to sit well with the community when they hear that we just spent $50 million for a vajicord. You know, I mean, I might go along with that, actually.
See, Dan, that's all the stuff that I want to discuss. I want to, I want to discuss how, what the limit is that we want to have the townspeople involved in. And then I want to discuss, do we put a, is it just a simple up and down?
Right.
Or is it, I mean, and if you look at the neighboring, if you look at Guilford, Guilford, and it's funny because these things never go away. So, in Guilford, which, you know, certainly North Route 8 is pretty conservative. So, they voted down a high school at least five times and it just kept coming back and coming back until they got a new $85 million high school. But theirs, and theirs will be interesting to see, you know, how they handle that, whether it's just an up-down and if five people come out and three vote no, do those three people rule? So, those are all things that we'll have to discuss and figure out what we want to do.
Right now, you really have oceanic power in this area and anything that you choose to do for the benefit of the public interest, namely give them some of that power, would represent an infringement on what power you have now, which is virtually total. And that's a question that, you know, goes to the heart of the council. You know, you may, you may feel that as representatives of the government, right now, you're entrusted with the complete say on these things. And as Al says, five people can decide. Although it is subject to filing a petition for initiative to get, you know, to reject that, you know. So, I mean, it's not like the public doesn't have any power right now. It's just that you're.
They would have to petition.
Yeah, they'd have to petition and what we're talking now is inviting them to have a say in the first instance.
Well, I think something that impacts the, you know, the taxpayers to a large extent, like Al said, we have to talk about and discuss what those, you know, numbers are. I don't think five votes should have that kind of power up here.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Where the thing, the only recourse the people in town now have is every two years, they can vote people out from up here. But this is in a town where we can't get enough volunteers to serve on our boards and commissions as is. So, you know, it's almost like we got nine suckers that said they'd do it up here and it's like, so now we vote some out, well, who's going to step up to the plate and run?
I'm learning that out.
You're supposed to step backwards when you ask you. All right, so hopefully Michael Lisa can get the, and I know, you know, I know she did check around, there's quite a bit of them out there and a lot of them are one and a half million, two million, but we'll see what they come up with.
All right, item E, suspense list.
This is required by law on a yearly basis, Anthony?
Yeah, what you have before you is an abbreviated version. The policy that the council passed requires the suspense list to come after the collection agency, after the marshal. These are people that are either deceased or bankrupt businesses that are not going to go through the marshal and the collection agency, it'd be a waste of time. So, these are going, the suspense list now, if the council approves that, and then the rest of them will go through the process that you folks adopted with the, they're currently in the hands of the marshal as we speak. And I think that warrant expires June 30th and then it'll go to the collection agency and then after they take their shot at it, it'll come back to you guys for anybody that has to go to a suspense at that point. This is a very limited list right now, just those two categories were captured.
So, isn't this one company, what do they do, close down and then reopen under the same name?
They filed bankruptcy and their debts were discharged from a certain point back and they're now, it's part of the bankruptcy law that the debts you see here were discharged as part of the bankruptcy filing. And then they reopened again. I know the company you're talking about, but that's why they're on there. You see, they're still in business and everything else.
Yeah, they just moved from one location to another on Milltown Ave.
Correct. As part of their bankruptcy filing, that was, the debts that were discharged.
Well, I guess so.
As long as you change the color of the roof.
Red. Did you say we need a motion?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the suspense list as presented.
Moved by Councilor Rose, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Gendela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Arden?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Pucci?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item F, financial reports for April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, well, I actually have good news, bad news, and then more good news. The, the good news, financial report remains unremarkable. It's, uh, it's two, you know, look at the revenue, we're eighty-nine point eight compared to eighty-seven point nine, so we're, we're, you know, greater than, you know, almost two points ahead of last year. Expenditure side, we're only a tenth percent ahead. The departments that show expend, over expended, you see on the second page, where it's actually the amount out the door, none of those are actually out the door, over expended. When you factor in the encumbrances, it brings them to over a hundred percent. But, uh, nothing too, too crazy to report. Again, things are going well. Taxes, ninety-nine point six last year, ninety-nine point four this year. Again, they're in the hands of the marshal currently, and then the collection agency, so that number will continue to rise. Uh, the revenues are all on target. That's the good news. Also, before I forget, a good part of the effort in the collecting of the taxes, Diane Artis from the school, uh, every year for the last three years has come over, and when we have the, um, delinquent notices in February, roughly five thousand delinquent notices, she brings her kids over, and they set up in here, and they hand fold and hand stuff the envelopes for us. And then the next month, they come back, when it's the demands, about a thousand less, people come in and pay off the delinquents, they come back and they restuff the demands for us as well. So, thanks to Diane and her crew, they do, they really help us out significantly. Next, I have the final numbers for you on the snow.
This is the bad news?
This is the bad news. About a hundred and ninety-two thousand over budget.
Can we take it out of lawn mowing?
The grass grow, I guess, sure.
We can just buy goats.
We got a goat house.
Right.
A hundred thousand dollars worth of salt over budget.
So, that, that's the bad news. Again, the categories you see, the overtime, a hundred and forty roughly compared to the seventy-nine budget, uh, the part-time labor, labor, I'm sorry, ninety-four hundred against the fifty-eight hundred budgeted. Salt, about three hundred thousand dollars, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the diesel fuel, about forty-eight compared to the thirty-eight, and that's, the thirty-eight is a, figuring about seventy-five percent of the budget is for winter. Repairs is the only bring that didn't go over budget, quite honestly, yet, but again, there's more to come. And the contractor plow trucks, the thirty thousand, we budgeted five. Now, there was discussion during the budget process of maybe revisiting that, putting money in contingency, and sadly, that didn't happen again this year. So, what happens when, when this happens, as I mentioned to you in the budget time, Mike is forced to put the kibosh on a lot of expenditures. So, you're telling every department that, okay, I know you wanted to buy this paper, but you can't buy it, we have to save money because winter was back. Once, maybe twice, now we're three, or three years in a row where we're suddenly telling people, so July first comes, it's like a spending spree. It's new money, let's buy, we, you know, we couldn't buy it for the last six months. And to address that, the contingency really needs to be bumped up. We have a seventy-five thousand dollar base number, that should at least be doubled. So, that's the bad. The last part of the good news is that, I'm sure you may have seen that we are eligible now in here in town for FEMA reimbursement.
Right.
Uh, so, I submitted for my preliminary damage assessment, about seventy-six thousand dollars of costs. So, theoretically, about fifty-five thousand we should get back, to go towards that one ninety-two. Still a hole, but maybe not as bad of a hole as it could have been otherwise. So, we're finalizing those numbers to get them in, I, there's a meeting Friday, but I did the thing over the line, over, online, so didn't go to that luckily. But, so our bills are roughly seventy-six, there's one more bill that came in, Fran had one of his doors blown off during the blizzard. So, roughly, say, say seventy-eight thousand, so we should get probably in the upper fifties back from the government. So, that's the good news part of the story. We didn't have that in the last couple winters, we had no FEMA storms that really put us behind the eight ball. But this year, at least, if we get some money back, it'll help defer some of the, the issue.
So, where is the remaining hundred and thirty thousand coming from?
Well, I think the light bulbs, every other one on.
Everyone else's budget.
Every, exactly.
Right.
At what point do we address this to make it, so we fund a more realistic numbers, and we're not looking at two hundred and a hole?
Well, that's the discussion that was, was held during the budget time, was...
I think we just, me personally, I just forgot about it. I think we all knew that we needed to do it.
Yeah. So, you know, the contingency, if you don't want to put it in Fran's budget initially, put it in contingency. So, at least we can draw out a bit if, if another bad year comes, you know. Seventy-five thousand, this doesn't cut it anymore.
Right.
For contingency, for our fifty million dollar budget. So, that should at least be a hundred and fifty to account for, and if you don't, you know, everything comes before you guys anyway, so nothing's going to get spent frivolously. So, that gives you more cushion for these winters that seem to be commonplace now with the amount of snow we're getting and the amount of events, so...
But we can't do that now for this year.
Negative.
We can't do it now.
So, thinking back to your other question, Dan, Mike's put the kibosh on all the spending. So, we seriously are, are doing with things that you are budgeted for to buy, but you can't buy until June thirtieth, until July first, again. So, again, you say that, you know, one year, two year, three years in a row, it affects the operation, affects the morale of the whole place.
It's a painful way of going about, you know, the budget. Now, I'd rather look at it ahead of time than after the fact, when you's forced to not buy a paper or whatever.
Right. Well, it was, discussion was held in the early part of the budget process, that potentially we could, you know, increase that, this is normal course of the winters now. But again, it just, it just fell off the table, and no one, no one went back to it, so...
If I'm still around, next go around, I'd like to address that.
Oh, yeah, unless it doesn't snow this winter.
Then we're good.
Then I guess we could spend it for... Doesn't snow.
Put the light bulbs back in the scene.
Okay. Item G, contingency appropriations.
So, the only one that's before us is for the clerical contract?
Right. That was approved in your last meeting, so there's a financial impact of that. Now, if you address the other ones tonight, it'll be on your June meeting contingency.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency, account number one oh one four seven oh three seven six zero 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 zero, and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following person, purpose, the clerical contract that was recently settled in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Gendela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arden?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Pucci?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Item H, tax refunds.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Gendela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arden?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
All right, here we go. Item I, mill rate, we're setting the mill rate.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year at thirty-one point oh eight mills, and further authorizes Michael T. Paul as town manager to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July first, two thousand fifteen, and January first, two thousand sixteen.
I'd like to second that, but with discussion. Are we, are we going to, since other things came up, do we have to set the mill rate? Are we, is there any ability for the council to go back in and do anything with the budget at this point, or is that...
You know what, Don? We're going to have John answer this, because I called him last week. Asked the same question. And, and I was asking it based on, like, wow, uh, almost ten percent of the people came out and voted, and ninety-five percent of them said it was too high, we better look at it.
Same, I asked, yeah.
And, um... The answer is no. The, uh, there wasn't the, 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 there wasn't the requisite percentage turnout that would have them have any say at all. So, essentially, under our ordinance, uh, it's annulity. Their vote was, was of no force in effect, because an insufficient number of people voted, never mind how many voted in favor, how many against.
Is that because we, we already voted to accept the budget? Is that the reason?
No, the, the, well, we voted to accept, the budget was presented to the townspeople, they had the right to, to vote, and they did, but unfortunately, not, not enough of them came out. It's...
Need the fifteen percent.
That's because they know you could lower it by one dollar. That's why nobody showed up.
It's not binding.
It's not binding, that's what I'm saying.
The way it's written, because you read it to me, it said, it said, the, the word is in there, you know, if fifteen percent doesn't come out, it shall be deemed...
Well, actually, I was driving, so I don't...
You made it up?
I made it up.
No, actually, no, I corrected myself. I called Lisa first. She read it to me, and I told it to him, and it, and it says right in there, shall be deemed approved or something. If, if they didn't vote it down, it shall be deemed approved, and, um, we're done. But I do want the public to know that, you know, I think all of us here are looking at it like, wow, uh, you know, eight hundred people came out and voted, and nine hundred and ninety of them said it's too high. Four said it's too, you know, whatever the number was, it was overwhelming that it was too high.
Right.
Um, but unfortunately, it doesn't meet that threshold, and because of the way it's written in the charter, we can't look at it if we wanted to.
I do, and also, um, you know, there's always the, uh, there's always the effect of people not coming out because they're okay with the budget. You don't know, you know, people may have simply said, this is not a big deal for me, I'm not interested, or, uh, it's fine, and they didn't show up. Now, if they knew that you were going to, uh, go back and change it, uh, that would be something else, so...
Well, then why would they vote?
Well, because if you look at other towns, though, take a look at any surrounding town, it's binding, the people do go out. That's why I would argue against what you're saying, but...
Well, that's a recent, that's a relatively recent change that we made. You know, originally, they, we did have a vote, or they did have a vote, they could reject the budget, and we had to go back and figure out what we wanted to do, and then it was final.
But the reason was, at the time when we were doing this, I can't remember a town, it might have been Derby, or Aunt Sony, they had nine times that the people had to go out and vote on it. And what the people were afraid that were at charter revision at the time, was they didn't want it to keep kicking back and forth, because now the referendum cost would be so high that, and that...
Nine times times, times five thousand dollars.
Well, that happened once, and it happened to happen the year that we had charter revision, that we visited this, because I was on the council then, it was about ten, it had to be about...
So, it had to be the first year that they put that provision in, not the last one when we tried to revise.
There is a, there is a, there is some wisdom to having a, a minimum turnout, because you could also, I don't know what our population is, probably fifteen thousand?
Oh, fifteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand, so, you know, eight hundred people come out and vote against it, and they decide for the, for a town of fourteen thousand. But I think, you know, what's happening, people are scratching the surface, you know, a month or two ago, uh, I think it was Dan who brought up, we're not publicizing this enough, there's, I mean...
Well, because when we had the budget hearing, five people showed up.
I mean, part of it may have to do, part of, part of it may have to do with the notion that, uh, we want you to go, it's part of your civic responsibility, just as important for, for, as you do when you vote for persons, this is, this is your budget, this is your chance to be heard, whatever. I mean, we could probably, you know, you could probably do better, we could probably do better in terms of, uh, instigating more people to come out. But beyond that, you also don't want what Donna, you're talking about, nine different, you know, everybody be hamstrung by that. There just isn't a lot of, and it goes into the other stuff, there's just not a lot of interest. It reflects itself in a lot of things, so I would, I wouldn't be surprised on the budget. As Al said, you know, we're having trouble getting people to be on commissions.
I think thirty-two mills, almost thirty-two mills is ridiculous for the amount of, the amount of services that we're able to provide to our citizens, I think it's shameful, personally, that's just me.
Well, what's, I, I'm curious as to what's ridiculous, because, you know, we know where the money's going, we're not, we're not blowing the money. I mean, everything is allocated to something worthwhile for the, the people that live here.
I think there's a lot of things that got to be seriously revisited, that's just my opinion.
You see, yeah, and, and you know what, it's like the, um, the, uh, the Democrats in Hartford are trying to get it so you can cut the school budgets locally, with, we got that email sent out to us because of the declining population in the state and in the, in the schools. And, uh, right now, it's against the law to spend less than you did last year, and I think that was, she was, he or she was from the city of Hamden, like, wait a minute, we got less people, less kids, and we can't ever cut it. So, you know, in, in this state that's losing population, we're going to have to start, you know, giving up on, on the size of our government, you know, but it's just, it's just not there yet.
Value is property.
A tax base.
Tough balance, tough balance, you know?
Well, it's, we need to, I mean, we have to, that's what we're looking at, a tax base, developing a tax base, so it's not on the homeowner, right? I mean, that's how other towns do it, hopefully.
All right, well, we have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Pucci. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Gendela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Pass.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arden?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Pucci?
No.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I'm going to vote no.
All right. Citizens in state, petition.
Example. Probably don't think, think me a broken record. Back up on, uh, section eight, formation of a redevelopment committee for fifteen ninety-nine Fox and Road, is that the old wall field? It's wall field to me, I don't know why this fifteen ninety-nine number, you're stuck on it. It sounded, from what I could hear, that you're going ahead with this. You, you've approached contractors, trying to get bids out of them. Did I hear right? I, I, I'm trying to clarify. Why are you trying to sell wall field? You got closed stores, you got a platform, concrete platform up here on Route Eighty doing nothing. Get somebody to build on it. You want to get, get what you call it. And we don't need more small stores, we got so many small stores, one's driving the other out. You lost two pizza places that I know of, right here in town, and you're probably going to lose some more. So, why do you want to put a lot of little stinking stores over on a ball field? There should be a park for North Branford. We ain't got nothing on this end of town, everything goes in Norford. You want to develop it? Develop seventeen up in Norford. Re-dig up the sewer yon the size, and put a sized pipe that'll take the, the flow from them places. You know, there's a lot of monkey business going on in this town. And, and here again, you're going to stick us with sixty thousand dollars worth of sixty thousand gallons worth of propane up here. Ridiculous. Too close to the center of town and heavy populations. But you went for it, and I don't know how we're coming out on it, I hope we find out Thursday night. But our government has gone to hell in this town, plain and simple, by my standards. We're not getting taxes? Yeah, you're up the taxes. And I looked at the tax thing, the booklet, and you didn't cut anything on most of these taxes. Whatever went in, you agreed to, you know. I, I don't get any benefits out of it. I get benefit of fire protection, police protection, my road, my street, and that, that's about it. For, for what I'm paying, I'm paying thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars worth of taxes on a place up there. $14,000 worth of taxes on the place up there. And, and I don't have that kind, well, I have income because I got the rest, I can't say I don't, but my income is cut because I'm not doing maple syrup anymore, I got Christmas trees, I can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion to go on executive session.
I'll make a motion going to executive session.
I'll second that.
Including the town attorney?
Nope.
Nope.